This is Charlton Zoning Board of Appeals, Tuesday, August 29, 2023. All the meeting to order. We'll start with new business. So 10 North Main Street LLC. Is there someone here for that?
Uh, me, yes.
Oh, you wanna step up, sit down, and state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Mike Canigan, 23 Keebav, Paxton. I'm here representing AG Sign. We did wear the contract for this.
So you did, so you're in here on behalf of 10 North Main Street LLC?
Yes.
Is there, was the, was the corporation, did they send some to us just okaying you to speak on their behalf, or?
Uh, it's part of the original permit. That there was a letter of authorization in the original permit.
In the original permit?
Original permit, so...
Okay. I think that's what Kurt's going to get right now. Don't know, that's what someone else is gonna get.
Um, I find it, I know it exists.
Okay. Yeah, so our bylaw says that just, you know, if someone's gonna speak on behalf of the petitioner, that we just have something in writing. So I'll accept, even if he doesn't have that or whatever, if there's an email that can be sent by 10 North Main saying that you were authorized to speak on behalf of them for this hearing, that would be great. So not necessarily need it right this second, but if Kurt has something in his original application and he can get us a copy of that, that would work as well. Alright, so you are here for a variance. Could you explain to the board what exactly you're looking for, what relief that needs to be granted, and the reasons why this board should grant the relief to you guys?
Sure. So the sign is actually in place. We had, it was a bit of a clerical error. I applied, when I'm going back, that UMass actually took over. It used to be Harrington Health and it became Harrington was part of, became part of UMass.
Yup.
I originally, when I looked at doing the job for UMass, was going to replace "like" with "like." There were signs up there, there was a sign up there that said Harrington that was actually significantly larger than what we put up.
Yup.
There was a set of plate letters that had external gooseneck lighting on them.
Right.
It took so long with UMass, we were doing multiple locations and so by the time this location came up, they said, "No, we want channel letters." And I went and changed them, to change the order to channel letters. When I submitted the application for the permit, I didn't realize, I accidentally, it didn't specify whether the signs were lit or not. We went and put channel letters up and within a week possibly, Mr. Meskis actually called and, or either told my guys, or I forget, but I had a conversation and he said you can, we had to shut them off, which we did that day. So the signs are actually, they will illuminate. The lettering is all up there, ready to be illuminated. It's a matter of turning the switch on. The bylaw says that only sign, only properties that are adjacent to Route 20, or continuous to Route 20, I can't remember exact language.
Yup.
Were one, were one property off.
Yup.
And the other thing that added to my confusion with this is CVS is within, what, 200 feet of the building?
And it's under the butt of Route 20.
And it's illuminated.
Right.
So...
But they have butt Route 20.
Exactly, yes. But, uh, so what we're looking for is to actually be able to turn the switch back on. And a couple of reasons that it actually benefits is, one, it is a medical facility, so having the sign be easily read is important. Number two is just that actually having the internal illumination the way it is, is actually less light pollution than if we were to actually put the goosenecks back up. Because you have a small set of letters that are illuminated versus having several goosenecks reflecting off the building. So I'm hoping that that's what, you know, and the other piece of it is there is no, it's not shining into anybody's window. There's, there's no property that this actually affects by having it illuminated.
Okay. Initially, one question I have for you is, when you filed out the application for the permit, did you, it had in there that you were having the original letter kind instead of the lettering that you put up? Is the sign, the permit for, is the permit for the "like" sign that was existing, or is the permit for the actual channel lettering?
Um, I believe, I believe the permit lettering specified that it was illuminated, but the drawings didn't say that it was. I believe that's how it was. So it is, I admitted when I, when I talked to Mr. Meskis that I made a mistake. I didn't realize that I had done that. So the question is just now, will, without the variance, is whether or not we go hang gooseneck lighting back up above it again?
You would keep the same sign there, just put gooseneck lighting above it? You wouldn't change the sign?
Yeah, 'cause as long as we don't turn it on, the sign is legal.
Okay.
So I had talked to UMass about taking it down and moving it to another location and they said, "No, we would just leave it."
Do you guys have any questions right now?
No. It seems like it's very similar to the one we just had, ways back, except in this case, it wasn't. This was done, well, Curtis, you do the permit? Do you wanna call the building inspector?
I'd like to see, I'd like to see if it was, how it was written up on the original permit.
Just out of curiosity, is there a reason that you don't just go hang the goosenecks now and avoid the variance altogether?
Uh, I talked to, it would obviously, from a legibility standpoint, lighting these letters and being able to read it from Route 20 is, that's what's required. To be able to get it so that you can read it from Route 20. It's read, that's the better way to do it. If we were to put goosenecks on it, you, yes, it wouldn't be as legible as it is having it illuminated.
Okay, so it's aesthetics or...
Uh, it's aesthetics and it's the fact that it's a medical facility. So just having the name prominent, that, um, you know, year-round, not so much, but four o'clock on, you know, in the wintertime, having it illuminated is helpful.
The positioning on the building, it's facing, the side that's facing Route 20?
Yes.
And that lot, that's on Route 20 is currently vacant, right? There's no, nothing there?
There's no houses yet.
There's a building on the top of that hill. There's a house up there. There's a house up there.
There's apartments.
Okay.
My, my, yeah. I submitted the disclosure that my property abuts it from the back, the medical building, and there's apartments up, up there.
Yeah, I will make that disclosure for the record that Mr. Taverio submitted that he is within the 300 feet of his property and has submitted a disclosure that he can act fair and impartial for this proceeding tonight, that he's not gonna revive in any way. I don't know that I have that information, but it was submitted to the clerk and to the selectman as required by statute.
Well, if he lives there, did he notice when it was turned on?
You can't see it from where you live, though.
It was on, it was on for what a day, you said?
For about a week.
I, I didn't, I didn't notice if it was on or off, to be honest.
It's not a huge sign.
Yeah, so, I mean, UMass, I mean, was their, their original position was that they wanted backlit signs? That it made a good difference to UMass in any way at all? They were, they come back to you and say, "Hey, look, you're eating this out of your pocket. If this is wrong, what, you know, how is this?"
No, actually, they, with that part, they're, they're a large place. They're just gonna live with that. It's that, the, um, it's, I originally proposed it to replace the plate letters that were there.
Yup.
And they came back to me and said, "We, we need it illuminated. It's, it's a medical facility." So that's where the, at that point in time, I should've gone back and checked the bylaws, which is something, normally when I do my permit drawings, I actually copy paste the bylaws and I put them right on the page. In this case, I didn't do it. So I would've, when I was proposing plate letters six months earlier, I knew that that was what the option was. But when they said, "We want channel letters," it just kinda went down a road and I, I missed it.
So the, so on the permit, it was put on that they were gonna be plate letters? And that they would have the...
No, because we're, I'm talking, I, the, the, it was probably six months from the time that I started developing drawings from them to the point where we actually applied for permits. So, and what happened was the original drawings that I gave them, that said, you know, letters, but it didn't actually specify illuminated or not. And I believe, I may be wrong, but I believe the permit actually said illuminated. But even with that, it didn't, you know, it may not have said channel letters, or it may not have said internally illuminated, but it would've said illuminated.
In all other respects, the sign complies with the town bylaw right now?
Yeah, it's actually, it's smaller than what's allowed. Substantially, because the letters that came off of it, I think, were like 24 and these are like that big.
At one point, though, I think this board granted a variance for, for a sign that was larger than what the bylaw allowed on that building.
The signage there is, I know, by variance because the illuminate, the, the ground sign is illuminated and it wouldn't be allowed either.
Yeah, that, and that's, but that's not backlit either.
The ground sign is, yes.
That is backlit?
Yes.
Or do you wanna call the zoning enforcement officer slash building inspector?
Yeah, I do.
Alright, can we call the building inspector slash zoning enforcement officer?
Hi, I'm Kurt Meskis, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. If I may, I will pass out my usual... Okay, dog and pony show here. So, looking at the presentation, we have the locus map on the front. There is a apartment complex with low-rise buildings directly adjacent to this. CVS is in the neighborhood. And yes, this board, when that building was built, granted a variance both for the size of the standing sign and for internal illumination on the standing sign, which is located down by the driveway. It's compliant, it's, it's not of issue here. The page two shows a picture just taken yesterday of the installed sign. The lower portion of this shows the graphics that was submitted as part of the permit application. The Harrington Healthcare was to be replaced by, um, call them channel letters?
Yes.
Channel letters, and the goosenecks are in place for that representation. The sign permit on page three specifically says, "Replace existing illuminated cabinets and faces on a monument sign. Replace existing 40-foot dimensional letters on the building with a new non-illuminated dimensional letters." And as the gentleman next to me relates is, "I came by the site as they were working on the monument sign and said, 'What's that on the building?'" And they're very cooperative. We had conversation. Yes, we know that customers change their mind, but it's just, you know, equal enforcement to all. The issue of it being a medical facility and having that being an internally or externally illuminated sign, I find interesting because the building closes at 5:00 and is only open five days a week. So having an internally illuminated sign to be seen from Route 20 at 12:00 at night raises some questions. That's what I have.
Gentlemen, any more questions right now?
No.
Um, do we have any abotters or members of the public that wanna speak? You're gonna come forward, yeah, forward, sir. Just, you have a seat. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Peter Cunningham at 15 North Main Street and I'm directly diagonally across from, from the sign, actually, less than 300 feet away.
Uh-huh.
And, you know, I don't know what gooseneck lighting actually means, but as I see it now, I mean, I can see the lighted sign at night and I have to concur, it doesn't make sense to me why it's lit at, I, I mean, in the wintertime, I can see maybe an hour or two of it being lit. Why is it lit all, all night? I mean, I, my, my, actually, I'm here because my concern is that there was gonna be a change to the sign and it was gonna be brighter and then I would see it, 'cause I already see it, you know? It already stands out quite a bit to me. So, um, so I'm just trying to understand and wrap my head around it. If it's, if it's gonna be brighter or if there's gonna be light reflecting towards me, 'cause I'm not on the Route 20 side, I'm towards...
So you're across, you're across from, you're on the same side as CVS?
Right, diagonally across.
Right, and like almost like the, you know, like the neighbor right behind CVS or a couple of doors down?
A couple of houses down.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
May I, I just wanna help him understand what we're talking about. So you're here.
Right.
Okay, the monument sign is out there and that, that is not in question.
Okay.
That's, that was permitted and that was correctly installed.
Okay.
The sign that is under discussion here is this sign that's on, on the face of the building.
Okay.
When this replaced this, but in a change, instead of having the goosenecks, those green things that hung over that faced it, that's what a gooseneck is.
Ah, okay.
The sign company put up an internally illuminated sign that's the customer's wishes and this, the...
Okay. Alright, so I first, I misconceived what was going on.
So you're, is you, will you be facing the sign from where you are?
I will be, but it's not the sign that I was concerned about.
It's the one on the ground that?
It's the one on the ground that's bright and stands out. And I was afraid, you know, that was gonna get brighter or, you know?
When they're not changing that, I don't...
That's not even under discussion from what I gather.
No, no, it's the one of the, can you see, we, we, when the, now that we have you here, and you live in, 'cause you see it, you're by there every day versus us by there once in a while.
Right.
The sign on the building, was it, with the gooseneck lighting, was it bright? Was it bothersome?
I found it, you know, both, but in a very minor way.
Yeah.
I would say, you know, it pales in comparison to the one on, on North Main Street itself, which also is illuminated at night.
I mean, it's all like daylight in your house at night with that sign on the ground, is it?
It kind of, you know, to a degree it is.
Yeah.
So, but, you know, hard to live with it and it's, it's, I was afraid that it was gonna get worse, honestly.
Yeah, yeah, we're not, we're not, that's not, like that, whatever it is there now, that's staying exactly the same. There's not any discussion at this point.
But the other sign, which is on the side of the building, is getting brighter from what I, from what I gather, from what's under discussion.
It sounds like it's gonna be less bright than what, what before, based on, well, I don't know how we know that.
The only way really to do it would be to get somebody with like a length meter to measure from the ground, but the goosenecks are gone.
The goosenecks are gone, so you couldn't even compare it.
So for the week that it was on, did you notice, boy?
Well, again, I, I don't think I was paying much attention to that. You know, for a week, it's, it was hard to...
But it wasn't blaring like, "Hey, pay attention to me."
Right, right, right. No, I didn't get that impression with it, yeah.
I always think about that sign on Grafton Street in Worcester there, that they had that billboard that was the electronic sign, you know? There was, there was, it was a loan office at one point, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was.
It was a mortgage company and it was like, you came up Grafton Street and it was like you were like 10 meters from the sun. It was so bright.
Someone actually shot that with a crossbow.
Did they really? Well, did you put that, was that your sign too?
No, I would, there's, there's two things wrong with that sign. It's supposed to automatically dim. That's a Worcester bylaw and it does, that doesn't.
Oh.
But no, someone asked me to go try to fix it and I was like, "Well, there's a arrow in it."
Alright, gentlemen, is there anybody else that has any questions? Any abotters, anybody else? So let's call the selectmen, planning board, conservation, border health, testers, tax collector's office, economic development, town clerk, what was it, education, your, uh, fire department, police department, any school board committee, senior center, any other board or committee that may have a comment in this hearing? Okay, no one? Do we have any more questions right now for the petitioner? The, the last time, so, um, we could ask them before we move further is to see if, like we did with another, with another, have them turn it on after hours to see how bright it is, what, what the impact is, if, if any of the board members want to do that. And this is not like, so one of the things is, is, and I'm sure you guys are aware of this, is that any other petition that we've received in the past for any sign is to that property. So there's no precedence here for us, whatever we do one way or the other. So if we granted or denied a sign on another piece of property in town, even if it's a similar situation, does not mean that, is that unique to that property? This is unique to this property? That we can decide however we wanna move forward that way. And this, the permit does say that it's a non-illuminated sign. The building inspector does come up with a good point is if the hours of the building are nine to five or eight to five, it doesn't make sense to have it on after hours.
It's till like four to five in the winter?
You have an hour or two.
It's not an emergency building either, there's no urgent care, there's no emergency services.
You don't want people to go there and think that it's open.
I, I'm not sure if...
But that wouldn't resolve it if it went to gooseneck either, 'cause that means they would have to put a timer on it or something.
Well, a gooseneck sounds like it's allowed, either way.
Gooseneck is allowed, right, under the bylaw, I think.
So it sounds like it's gonna be lit one way or the other.
Internally illuminated signs are not allowed under the bylaw.
Yeah, unless it's on Route 20 or...
Unless it's directly on Route 20. So CVS is directly on Route 20. I think, I think the two, the two, it has to be in a business or industrial zone in Route 20 or Route 169 for internal illumination.
What is the functional reasoning behind that, if there is one? Or that's just how it's written?
That's how it's written. So when our, um, you know, when, when our town, you know, when people before us in the town that wrote the original set of bylaws, this is what they decided they came up with. This is what the board's here, is that if for some reason that we as a board think that certain pieces of property deserves relief under the statute, then we can grant relief out of that. But, you know, when they looked at the original, when they, when they originally wrote the bylaw, they're like, "This is what we want our town to look like," or in, so, does not, it's the will of the people, I guess.
Yeah, if you look at section A1, it gives you kind of a list of like the rationale for all their signs.
205.6.
Yeah, 251. Yeah, it's page 41 in that book, if you, but, you know, minimize lighting impacts of signs, disrupt the aesthetic environment of the town, naval fair and consistent enforcement, protect architecture, character in appearance of neighborhoods, so.
And so that's the question too, was that, there is a neighborhood across up on the hill, right? There's a couple of apartments?
Yeah.
But it's gonna be lit either way, so which one's gonna be, which one is less bothersome?
Yeah, right.
I think aesthetically, it looks better when it's internally lit, personally, but...
I, I don't disagree with that statement and it's aesthetically in line with the sign that's down at the end of the driveway.
So we can put restrictions on the sign if we want to grant a variance for this. So yeah, I think that, I don't think it's out of line under the bylaw to say, because we wanna minimize light pollution or whatever under, under that bylaw to say, okay, you know, that the sign is to be illuminated, you know, one hour prior to opening and to one hour after closing and have it on a timer type thing. So if they close at 5, that the light goes off at 6 and then if they're not open all night, there's no point for them to have the light on at night. And actually, it might, it might be a detriment to have it on at night if there is an emergency, 'cause people might think that they can go there and there'd be no one there.
I did that once with my son, he cut his finger and...
He brought him there, it was closed.
It was 6:00. I didn't know.
Yeah.
I thought it was, I thought it was, I thought it was an emergency.
Did they?
They did, yeah.
Yeah.
They used to. They close it down after dark or something.
Oh.
So then the question becomes, if we put that restriction on, will they choose to go back with the goosenecks? 'Cause they can do that 24/7?
Yeah, well, that's up to them, bro.
It's a good point.
But I like it. I think it's a good, I like it, good addition.
Why? The gooseneck?
Adding the timer. The timer, yeah. I mean, I, you know where I stand. I think that they should stick to the bylaws on this one just because it's simple and straightforward and, I mean, that's what they applied for and, you know, ended up deviating from, um, sort of on their own accord, so.
Right, and this is kinda like asking, they're asking for forgiveness rather than permission at this point. Does anybody wanna go look at the sign before? Do you wanna have it illuminated?
Personally, I don't think it matters without being able to compare the gooseneck versus...
True.
Yeah, internally illuminated. I could be swayed either way on this one. I gotta go with us.
Yeah, I am too, 'cause I, I, in this case, I'm more leaning with Eric that like, hey, this is what the bylaw says and there's not really a need to do it a different way, you know, to have it backlit. But I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I don't think that it should be lit 24 hours a day.
I would agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, there's no safety issues, you know, there's nothing really weird.
If, if the board voted to grant a variance and we were gonna restrict it to a certain timeframe, is that something that can be done?
Yeah, I mean, as far as putting a time clock into it?
Yeah, and that's not a huge issue in any way at all.
It's a matter of an expense note. Couple a hundred bucks. It may already exist, I, I don't know.
They charged me, they charged me, UMass, just for Tylenol, a couple hundred dollars.
But I don't, I don't know how the existing sign was controlled, the, the old sign. So it may already be on a time clock.
The next, the other question I do have is, is that Kurt's original letter, you would need to pull a electric permit. Was there a wiring permit already pulled for, you put the sign up? Or is that part of the general permit?
Uh, I don't know, I'd have to check with Tony, the electrician.
Okay.
We...
He, Tony, Tony would, there's a separate electrician that would pull a permit if needed?
Yes.
Okay. 'Cause it did say something in his letter about obtaining a wiring permit.
So yeah, we, we're a UL listed shop, so I can build signage and put a UL label on it.
Okay.
But we have to hire an electrician to do the final connection.
Saw that someplace Kurt's letter annoyed me.
Yeah.
That was soon. Oh, apply for, yeah, okay.
Yeah, he had it in his letter. Apply for a wiring permit and install external illumination.
It'll be for the Goose Necks.
If that's, if they wanted to do.
If they wanted to do the Goose Necks. Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not overly crazy about this, because I'm not really convinced that there's an absolute need for it. But it is a matter of practicality, it doesn't make sense to go through all that extra stuff if it's going to be lit anyways. And to Jason's point, if we put Goose Necks in, they could probably light it twenty-four hours a day if they wanted to anyway.
I'm not positive, but I'm almost, I, I feel like that's what it was.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really remember.
I'm, I'm standing in favor of the, putting the, the parameters of the, you know, timer.
So what are you looking at, the reasons why you think that it's okay?
I, I kind of stand with what you're saying with the, the effort, you know, to go through, but also, I mean, it's going to be illuminated either way. And if it, we go with this limiting factor, it might be actually not on as much as the pre-existing sign with the Goose Necks. We might be restricting the amount of light.
So you think, you think by granting the variance or if we would be more in line with the purpose of the intent of the bylaw to limit the light pollution and?
Yes.
Then the other way? What do you guys think?
Yeah, I agree. Time restriction is a better final outcome.
Yeah.
If they even stick to it, they might choose to just go back to the Goose Necks. If we want it all the time, then that's okay.
They're allowed to do that. That's not under our control.
That's not under our control at all, right. I mean, they could withdraw the petition and say, well, just Goose Necks, there's nothing we can do about that.
Yeah.
Right, so we can't, we can't control that in any way.
Can I ask a quick, just to be clear, that if the decision is made to leave the sign, it wouldn't preclude them from putting up Goose Necks?
No, because Goose Necks are allowed by the bylaw.
Reason I'm asking is, you said withdraw the petition, like so, because I can't speak to UMass. If I were to go back and say, okay, well, we can have it lit until five o'clock, they may say, put up Goose Necks. So I don't, like, if I walk out of here with a decision, it's not going to preclude them from, from going the other directions.
I don't think that.
If, if you were to leave what's there there and put Goose Necks back and light it twenty-four hours a day, it's not a violation of the bylaw. Yeah, they could do that by right.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I'm just making it, I'm just asking that to be clear, so that you don't make a decision and then I, and I go back to them and I say, yeah, you can leave it on till five, and they're like, oh, well, no. That's what I wanted to make, because they're, they're not actually, they're, they're leaving this to me to.
I, I can, we could continue the meeting and you could find out, and then we could make a decision based on that. If you want to go that way, you could ask this board to continue it until we have another meeting. And then, you know, I don't know how they feel about keeping it unlit until our next meeting. That's certainly the case. When you did, you did make me think of something, is that if we do grant a variance and we do limit the time, my thinking, now that you mentioned that, is that if, if they did go back to Goose Necks, then we will not want their, the sign, it's one or the other, you know? So if they put Goose Necks on, then the expectation, when my mind would be, that they wouldn't internally illuminate the sign either. It would be one or the other.
Oh, no, they, yeah, so if it's internally illuminated, you're regulating that.
Right.
But if they go and put Goose Necks on it, it's unregulated.
It's, yeah.
But, and.
But they wouldn't have, they wouldn't internally illuminate and put Goose Necks on.
And I would think as well that.
They'd be allowed to.
Because if, if we.
If we grant it.
If we grant the variance, they could do both if they wanted to. They could say, well, internally illuminate it during the day and at five o'clock, we'll turn on the Goose Necks.
Yeah, it wouldn't be worth it electrically to do it.
I mean, it's certainly.
You're right, they could.
They could do that if they wanted to.
Then that would definitely, yeah, that would, then it would be a little obtrusive.
Right, and that's not like the whole idea of this.
Yeah.
But is it possible to regulate, just reg, if, regulate the time more to their, their benefit than an hour after, like, if they said, you know, nine o'clock at night, it's off, that I think would be an easy sell versus, you know, it's on for an hour. And it's also ki, it's almost in line with, you know, Northborough has like a ten o'clock, signs are off unless the building is open. You know, it's, it's typical of towns to, to actually have a curfew for signs in general.
I, I don't, I.
Not all towns, but.
Yeah, I just picked an hour afterwards.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, at some point, you know, what's, what's the right times, an hour? Is, do we say so many hours after sunset, so, you know, so, but I don't know if you can set a timer, like, I mean, you might be able to do that these days. To say, you know, sunset is at four and, you know, so many hours after sunset.
You can have solar, I'm not sure if you could.
So devil's advocate, if they were to decide to open an urgent care there again.
It would be open.
Twenty-four seven.
They could, right.
If we said, if we set nine o'clock as a shut-off time, they have to come back for new variances.
Yeah, they could, and then they'd have a reason to.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think nine to six is pretty reasonable. Just cut it all the way across the board.
Yeah, because if we said within so many hours after the, the place closes, but it might, like, I, I agree with you, like, if we gave it an exact time every night and then you were going to be open, they would have to come back and ask for a release on that restriction. If we say they went less hours.
Unless you said like, you know, two hours after you close and then if they change their closing time.
If they changed their hours, and they're not going to change their hours based upon whether we're going to let the sign off or not.
I mean, you, you could also say hours of nine PM to six AM, unless the building is open.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you know, and the thing is, do we want to hear that again, you know, five years from now? Because they decide they're going to go, doesn't really make a difference to us, or however future board that's here, you know?
They need something to do, the board in the future.
I, I think I would agree with the nine to six, it's off unless they're open for business.
But then, like, so when then, if they're open for business, it stays on until they close?
If they're open twenty-four seven, then it's.
Twenty-four seven.
Twenty-four seven, yeah, because you need to see that if they're open and, you know, they can go in there and get urgent care.
So what way I think about it is though, if we're going to do a restriction, is that people typically, if my office closes at five, typically I'm not leaving, you know, in, in a lot of places I like that. You don't typically leave right when you, the, the place closes, that you're working for a couple of hours afterwards sometimes.
But still, you're talking about the, the lighting of the sign, not like the building lighting or the parking lot lighting, right?
No, I don't know if the parking lot's lit or what the story is on that.
Right. I'm just saying that the sign light, it's not, it's irrelevant to whether somebody's in the building or not.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, it's just, like, if you go by a store and the sign's not lit, there can be people in there working, restocking shelves, and you just know not to go in.
I prefer to find out how UMass feels about it before we decide.
Well, we've got their representative here.
Because I'd hate to approve a bylaw and then they say, well, we're just going to do the Goose Necks because there's no restrictions. And then we've got this variance out there for no reason.
Yeah, but it's only for this.
Yeah, but it saved us another meeting.
True.
Are you going to have, Mary's going to suggest to you that we have a meeting on October seventeenth because we have other applications coming in.
Do we still have enough time under this, under this application to go to October seventeenth?
It's a long reserve.
That's another month and a half away. How much time do we have left on this application?
I didn't mess up the dates.
Which, I'm sure you didn't.
Sixty-five days of September twenty-third and a decision as we made by October twenty-eighth.
I shouldn't want to be here.
So we had to open the meeting by September twenty-third.
Yeah.
Okay, which we've done.
Yeah, so that would be good, right?
But I won't be here on the seventeenth. So if you have enough.
There's just four of us here, so all four of us would have to, if we were going to grant a variance under that, all four of us would have to vote yea on that.
Yeah.
Which I'm not sure all of us are going to vote yea or nay.
I think we just go forward, give them the variance with the hours restriction, and then if UMass chooses to go with the Goose Necks, then they can. And if they want to keep their sign the way it is, then there's no reason that they should have an issue with it going off at nine o'clock and going back on in the morning at six.
I, I think going on at nine AM, you know, that time is fine. I just, at night, because if they, you know, change their hours just to say like so many hours after close is easy. Because if, you know, one, this year, UMass decides they're going to be open until five, and next year, they're going to be open till seven, and then the year after that, and you want to do nine o'clock at night, you know, I, in my mind, I think like two hours after closing is more than enough. And then that way, they don't have, when they're not coming back, if they're going to be open twenty-four hours or whatever, it's just, it is what it is and we don't have to deal with it again.
Okay.
Yeah, so two hours, yeah, so two hours before open, two hours after close?
One hour before open, two hours after. Thank you, Mr. Meskis. Have a nice evening.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
But if they open, so here's, if they open at seven.
Yeah.
I don't know what time they open now, but then you're seeing they can turn the lights on at five.
If they're open an hour.
I thought you said two hours.
One, one hour before, two hours. That's what I'm saying.
That makes more, that makes more sense, yeah.
Yeah, so if they open at seven, the earliest they could put it on is six. If they open at nine, then it would be eight. And if they close at five, it would have to go off at seven. And then I think the condition is, is that if, if another light source is used to illuminate this, then, then it's not to be, the, the internal illumination would not be turned on at all.
What if another, what if UMass sells the facility and say, we're not going to use this anymore, somebody else takes over?
They would change the signs and it would start all over.
Hey, who would have gotten their sign job?
No, because they still have a variance in place that says they can have the backlit sign.
Yeah.
With this, this.
With the same time you mass. Yeah, but, but what I'm getting at is they might decide to be open twenty-four seven. I'd rather, I think I'd, I'd rather have a set time, like it's off between nine and six, so that future tenants can't play with it.
If they're open, those signs should be lit.
Signs should be lit.
Then they come back to us.
But then you want to make it a time that's going to be like nine o'clock at night.
That's what I'm saying, they go off at nine at night and they can come back on at six in the morning. Or they can choose a shorter window, but that's what they're.
I mean, this, the sign that, that's up, that you put up there now is still larger than what the bylaw allows. You were able to put a larger sign under the variance, just smaller than the Harrington sign, correct?
I'd have to double-check that to know whether it's by right or, oh, what I do know is it's significantly smaller, almost half as big as what was there.
Right.
How it fits to the, I, I believe actually it is permitted by right, but I'd have to, I, I don't know that. I was wrong about the other thing, so, you know, I.
It was forty square feet was, was the original sign, and I think it's bigger than the allowed signage.
Well, but we're not calling it a question of signage, are we?
No, I, I think.
It's a very easy place already for it, is my one sign.
Right, so what, what he's saying is, is that, that the board at some point in the past granted a, a variance for that sign. And maybe that sign might be larger.
I don't remember it really.
Or what if then, when did they build that building? That was fifteen years ago.
Oh, because the Harrington sign had.
I was on the board at the time, I remember that, but I don't remember how many years ago it was.
So because they had the variance, then they were allowed to build, to build within it or to install a sign.
Yeah, what Jason's saying is that, that time might be larger because we already granted a variance for a larger sign.
Because I don't think as UMass is going through a lot of restructuring, that building's kind of a, I'm not sure it's quite close to other stuff, so I could see if they were doing cost cutting, then to sell it.
Right.
And then the new owner would be able to stick a forty-foot sign, internally illuminated sign.
Yeah, I didn't think about the fact that it, it would play forward.
Because it runs with the land, not with UMass.
Right, because it's, it's part, it goes on the title.
Right. You know, so if, you know, company Bob used Autobots moved there and they wanted to put a rarefoot sign, and they're going to be open till ten, and that sign would be up to me, yeah, you get a good point there.
Yeah, no, it's a goodness. That's, yeah, that's, that's an interesting twist to it.
Is that the case, just for clarification? Like, I thought that the, it would be for the approval of this design on this sign with the backlit illumination, the variance applies. So whatever signage goes in that property.
Runs with the land.
Yeah.
So if we grant a variance for a rear illuminated sign, so say UMass, they get bought out by, you know, ABC Healthcare out of, you know, Oklahoma City, and ABC puts a sign up, they'd be able to put a, a back, internal illuminated sign there.
Then they already have that because they have the one down on the driveway.
But they got a variance for that.
So the variance exists with the property.
Yes.
Right, for that location though, so that, when that zoning board granted that variance, it was for that monument sign on the ground. They specifically came for that sign and said, we want to put a sign on the ground, this is what we need a variance for, so we granted that. So UMass now comes in, they can change the, the face of that to say UMass instead of Harrington, but they don't want to take the sign down and get a new sign because it's a different company. They can keep that sign there like that as long as the sign is there.
Okay, so the one going up on the building, the word can change.
The wording can change.
We're granting a variance on.
We're granting a variance, so we, so if, like I said, UMass gets bought out, they close the building, someone else buys it, they want to change the sign on the side of the building, they can put a new sign up there that will be allowed to be internally illuminated because we granted a variance for an internal illumination sign.
I think that it brings the question down to which one's putting out more light, because either way it's going to be lit.
Yeah.
Which, there's no way to tell unless the, it already was pulled out.
Yeah.
One thing you could specify is individual letter sign, so that you don't wind up with a forty-square-foot sign cabinet.
Is the sign that, that you're putting up there now is individual lettered?
It's individual letters.
Is there, is there a tremendous difference in terms of illumination power between an individual lettered sign and a case si, and case sign?
Think about that TV screen that you're talking about.
Well, as far as, yeah, I mean, if you have a, there's a bunch, like, when the gentleman was asking about like the, the sign that's at the street corner.
Yeah.
We actually made that less light output, because the only thing that lights actually on that is the, the UMass lettering.
Right.
It used to be a large white light that poured out of the entire face, and now only the UMass, the, the background is blue. It's dark, it's.
Oh, that's right, I remember that. It was like Lex, Lexan and the whole.
And the whole face lit up when it was Harrington. And now that, that is a metal face with the lettering cut out of it and only the lettering lights up. So that actually brought the light output down for that side. So the reason I'm saying this is, it's hard to say.
Oh, great, thank you.
It's hard to say exactly what, you know, eh, eh, so like if you had a, a white background, two foot by twenty-foot-long sign.
Yeah.
That would put out more light than what these letters are, because they're individual, and these letters have a sixty-watt power supply on them. So, I mean.
Can you buy a bigger power supply? Can you put?
It wouldn't make it any brighter, no.
It wouldn't make it any brighter?
No, so what I'm saying, the, the LEDs that are in it, it's only sixty watts of power.
But if you had a forty, if you had a forty-square-foot box, you could pack an awful lot of light bulbs inside that.
So i, if, if we were to put something in, in, if we were to grant a variance to say that that the restriction is to be no greater illumination than this sign that's put up?
Or to say that it's individual letters, an individual letter sign? So that, because it would. And, and that's actually, that is something you can do. Worcester has it in their bylaw that you can have a roof sign, but the roof sign has to be an individual letter sign, it can't be a cabinet. So that is something you can do. But it would just be for this property.
Right, and we, and we'd have to say it's only for internally illuminated sign. So they could put a cabinet sign, but they wouldn't be able to internally illuminate it. So if they wanted to put a big sign, they could go back to Goose Neck or another thing that's allowed under the bylaw. So if they wanted to put a big sign, they could go back to a gooseneck or another thing that's allowed under the bylaw and put other lights on it if they wanted to put a different sign there.
Yeah, cause realistically, they could do an LED screen up there and it could just be.
Right, right.
And that's what, that's.
Yeah.
That's what its point is, I think.
Yeah, no, then.
So where'd we land on hours?
Six A M. to nine P M.? How's that sound?
That sounds good.
Does that sound any good to you guys?
And then also the restriction of it being an individual letter.
Yeah.
Right. That, this is for an individual, the, the inter- internal illumination is for an individ- this is an individually lettered sign right now, right?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so it's an individually lettered sign and that, uh, also that if, um, if the, if, if, and if the light source, if the sign is illuminated other than internally illuminated, then this, then, then this isn't turned on. So if they decide, five years from now, to do both, so five years from now, UMass decides that they like the look of gooseneck lamps better than internally illuminated signs, then, then.
Then they have to come back.
Yeah, so I don't know if I could, if it's.
I don't, how do you word that?
Restricted to no other light source illuminating the sign, maybe?
We did, but it even really put off more light at that point?
But the whole point of granting the variance is that, the other, cause they could, like, well, we just wanna do the gooseneck, then, like, they, they, like you said before, they could do the gooseneck from six to nine, they could do this sign from six to nine, and then just turn the other thing on after nine. So if there's any other light source that's illuminating this sign, then it's not, it's not to be internally illuminated.
Then you could argue the streetlight lights it up.
No, 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 I mean, yeah, that's a good, yeah.
Rabbit hole's gate.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, if, if it's a, if it's a, the eighth Thursday of, you know, in, in the third moon or whatever, they can light the sign.
Guys, ready to close the public portion?
Um.
Do we call all the other boards?
Yeah, we already did that.
You did that.
So I wanna make a motion to close the open hearing, uh, portion of, public portion of this meeting, is there a motion?
I'll make said motion.
There's a motion on the table.
Second.
There's a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, so I think we're pretty much the three, so. If we're gonna grant the variance, the reason why we're gonna grant the variance is that this existing sign would, uh, be, more in line to protect the, the health, safety, and general welfare of the, of the residents pursuant to two, two hundred dash five point six A one.
And then, how do you, uh?
So we're gonna, we're strict the hours and we're gonna restrict it to individually lettered, internally illuminated signs.
Right, or do you don't wanna restrict it if it's, if it's illuminated by another light source, that it's not longer internally illuminated?
Yeah, but if we're saying it's either or, so it's only if it's internally illuminated can, is it for, from six to nine, is that correct?
Yeah, eh, my, my thing is, is that if it's, if it's, if it's, if the sign is directly illuminated by another light source, then it's not to be internally illuminated.
Right, okay, so then, yeah, so then.
Yeah, and so it's not, it's, so it would be.
I'm just trying to think of how you.
Your, your saying is, your saying is, is that if they can, if, well, they're not, they're not illuminating it when it's internally illuminated, only when it's not internally illuminated.
Correct, yeah.
Right, I see what you're saying.
It is something like it's, it's not to be externally lit if it's internally lit.
Right, well, that's the, yeah, how do you phrase that? So that they don't, you know, double.
I just don't, I don't think they would have any reason to turn both on.
I don't either.
They might turn one off, turn the other one on if they wanna do, I just don't think it's that big of a deal.
All right. Does someone wanna make a motion to grant a variance under?
Let's take it.
Two hundred dash five point six C. Uh, the reason being is, is that the, um, is it C in?
I thought it was A.
I thought it was C.
It is, uh, C, five dash six, five point six C.
And I shouldn't be the one making the motion.
C, yeah, five point six C, subsection. Subsection two, the granting, um, we're not granting a variance though for, the lighting of a sign may only be of a white light of reasonable intensity, so that would remain in place and directed solely at the sign, well, in the part that's, so the restriction would be that they would maintain, um, of the white light of reasonable intensity as well. We wouldn't, we're not granting relief on that.
Okay, all right, so I'll propose motion to grant the variance to the applicant uh, on the basis that after review, uh, having an internally illuminated sign is, uh, more desirable and more in line with, uh, the zoning bylaws of section two hundred five dot six. And, uh, we're gonna grant the variance from two hundred five dot six C subsection two allowing an internally illuminated sign, uh, at this location as submitted by the applicant uh, only to be illuminated between the hours of six A M. and nine P M.
Eastern time.
Eastern time, and also this will, uh, this variance only, uh, carries forward for individually lettered signs.
You, um, and we're not, you, you, we're not granting relief for, um, that they, they would still maintain a white light of reasonable intensity um, on, on the sign as well.
Yep.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Granted unanimously, so UMass, they'll be able to shine the direction now, shine the light to, uh, um, so I'm, I don't know, twenty, you have a twenty-day appeal period? So Mary, we'll file this with the clerk, uh, after twenty days has elapsed, then they'll, they'll notify you that, um, that the, um, that the variance has passed, so that someone wants to appeal it, and then, um, you'll need to file it at the registry at some point. You want, and you need to file the whole variance, not just like one page. We've had people do that to us, you know, like, this is not the whole variance, so, um, thank you, and have a good night, good luck.
Thank you, I appreciate the, uh, amount of thought that went into it. I told my wife, I'm like, I'm the only one on the agenda, I'll be home by seven thirty.
Yeah, that's, that's when, that's when it goes to like nine, you know, that's, that's what happened, yeah.
No, I think it was, it's a fair decision, I, I appreciate the amount of thought that you went, put into it. So, thanks.
All right, so next on the agenda is old business, I think, what's all?
Just minutes, I think.
Review, uh, review and approval of the minutes, I think we're in the packet there.
Yeah, I already did that.
Okay.
I do as well.
Is there a motion to, um, accept, is there a motion on the minutes?
I'll make said motion.
I second said motion.
There's, um, all in favor of approving the minutes as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, any other business that we need to know, or that was unknown at the time of the meeting? Anything else we need to discuss? Yeah, I think I'm available, you guys, are you available?
Yeah.
Just let Shane and Rob know.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think he plays, I thought he plays, he doesn't play football anymore? I know he's playing football. Is he, is he, Shane's on a chip, he'll know, is he in high school? I don't know. Can't say he's gonna go to his daughter's practice because his daughter's off to college on Thursday or Friday, so.
Do we, uh, wanna talk at all about adding hours restrictions to the zoning bylaws?
Is that something that we should propose?
Yeah, so if we want, if the, no, so if we wanna change the bylaw, typically what we would do is, we would.
Make a suggestion?
Yeah.
If you wanna do that, you can't talk about it now, ask for it on the next agenda, you can do it, otherwise you're violating the meeting.
Right.
Talking about something not.
Well, we can talk about it in, in general terms, not something specific.
Yeah, but you can't, we can add on if you wanna make any.
Right, so if there was a, if there was something that we wanted to make, if we saw something that we think that is, that should be different in the bylaw, that's there, so we get an appeal that, that we think that, like, hey, this bylaw doesn't make sense.
Right.
Then typically we would put something together, so we'd have to have a meeting about it, put it together, and then we would usually, I think, go through the planning board. And the planning board would put it as a procedure for them to put it on the next town meeting, and then it would be like, you know, supported by the planning board.
So the planning boards will want to bring it to town meeting?
Yeah, for our purposes, yeah, I mean, there's other, we, we can do like a citizens petition or whatever.
Yeah.
But I think that if we're gonna do something, it makes sense for both our board and for the planning board to be in line with the change, cause it impacts both of us, you know?
Yep.
So, you know, they, we, they, you know, people come to us for relief, but if they don't need relief, they're looking at it to make sure that they're in line.
They're in line, yeah.
So we wanna make sure, and Randy's a really great guy, he's, he's easy to talk to and, uh, and, uh, and he's amenable always to look and make things better, so.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I don't know if you guys are interested or amenable and wanna discuss it, but.
Yeah.
I think we should put it on, on the next meeting.
Would a change, like if we made a, a restriction, would that change like existing signs, or would they be grandfathered?
No, so, they would be, uh, so they would be considered pre-existing non-conforming.
Yeah.
So if they could replace their existing sign as it is. But they couldn't, so like say, if we were gonna do something that, that the bylaw says X and it gets changed to Y, the person that has X right now can maintain X because that was before the change in the bylaw. If they were gonna do something new, then it would have to, to apply to Y, whatever the new bylaw would be.
Right, so.
So in any case, not, in a specific thing.
So this building that we just created a variance for would fall under the exemption from.
Exemption, right, so that's what I'm saying is, is that by granting a variance, it's not the person that owns the property, that, that variance now runs with the land, and that's sometimes we need to think about, yeah, this guy wants to do this now, but what's a consequence? You know, ten or fifteen years, cause there's no guarantee that, number one, that that person's gonna own the property for that long, so they might be saying, well, we're gonna do X on this property, and it's not gonna be a problem, and then five years later they sell it and we granted a variance, and the next person is gonna do something that we don't necessarily, the town doesn't necessarily like, but we've granted the variance in it, in, you know, and now, you know, the town's, we're stuck with it. So, yeah, so, you know, we wanna think about the long-term, you know, effects, and it's not just whatever the guy that's there now.
Right.
Yeah, and that was to Jason's point tonight, like, hey, you know, whatever, if UMass doesn't own it, and, you know, they're gonna put a big, you know, big sign on that, so.
Right, and your center folds.
Actually, that would be adult, that would fall under the adult entertainment.
And that's not, and that is not, there is a red light district in Charlton, but that's not it.
Wait a minute, my red light district.
Where is it, Frank?
Is on the Sturbridge Charlton line on Route twenty, so where that church is there, and the old gym, that's the area that would be considered the red light district of Charlton.
Near the only traffic light.
So the motion to, uh, end the meeting this evening?
I'll make a motion to end the meeting.
There's a motion, a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Until October seventeenth.
October seventeenth, good.